The time is up, so we'll declare a quorum. And the only one that's not present is Brittany.
Down, down.
Okay.
Okay, then I'll call it to order at 6:00 on April 7. And was there any reasons to think we would have time for visitors or citizens' quorum?
Again, I would suspect that Ms. Nash would like to wait until her item comes up. If I could, Chairman, if you would, ah, I believe this is Ms. Brittany here. So I believe we've got everyone.
Hello.
Hello, Ms. Brittany.
Yes, hi, I'm sorry, we are dealing with a newborn and she's not going down for a nap, so we're here, we made it.
Awesome.
Okay, then I'll declare.
Nelson, if I, Nelson.
A full house in at 6:01.
If you would, Nelson, if you could just call everyone by name and I could respond, then that would get it on the record that everyone's in attendance.
Okay, Bill Simpson.
Present.
Jeff Waddell.
Present.
Carol Langley.
Present.
And Ms. Brittany.
Present.
And Nelson's here, so that's quorum, that's everybody. All right, let's get started. Item number one, consideration and possible action regarding special meeting minutes of March 9, 2020.
This is Jeff, I'll make a motion to pass the meeting minute as read from the special, regular, I'm sorry, from the regular meeting of March 3, 2020.
March 3 or March 9?
Oh, I'm looking at something else, hold on. I'm sorry, I had scrolled down, that was a special meeting we did.
Right.
Yes, I'll make a motion, this is Jeff, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as read for the special meeting, March 9.
This is Carol, I will second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes, or special meeting minutes for March 9, 2020. Any further discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, it sounded like everybody. Motion.
Just to ask if anyone is opposed and if we need to do a roll call after that.
Okay, is there anybody opposed to those meeting minutes? Sounds awful quiet, so let's approve them, what do you say?
Thank you, sir.
Item number two, consideration and possible action regarding approval of exterior modifications for Wings Over Montgomery, located at 14,335 Liberty Street, Montgomery, in the Historic Preservation District as submitted by Damon Haynes.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, you will see in your packet the existing photos of the building. Again, this is just on the south side of the First State Bank. The applicant is planning on opening a to-go wing restaurant, takeout operation. It was actually, it sounds like fortuitous timing. He was planning on a to-go restaurant before all restaurants were to go only, but you can see in the renderings, there essentially, the building is going to remain white, the red trim is going to be replaced with black. And right now, there's kind of a, you know, kind of a Victorian-looking wood spindle handrail around the porch, and he's going to replace that with a solid wall. I'll just answer any thoughts or questions that you guys have, but other than that, I believe all the information's in your packet.
Believe everything looks good, it's going to dress up that gray over there.
Yes, I agree, I'm sorry, I had to look at the picture again, but yes, it looks good. The sign looks like it's all in proper proportions.
It does.
Is that sign in this meeting today, or is that later on?
It is, it's included in this item.
Okay, all right, and it looks like it's going to be a simple plain jane sign. Nothing illuminating or anything like that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks good, nicely, it would be a nice improvement to the building, actually.
Everybody, if everybody's ready, I will make a motion, if there's any more other comments or anything, to approve the exterior modifications for the Wings Over Montgomery, located at 14335 Liberty Street, in the Historic Preservation District as submitted by Damon Haynes.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the exterior modifications at 14,335 Liberty Street. Is there any further discussion? Okay, to be sure we're hearing everybody, if you're in favor, indicate by saying aye, or your first name first and then aye.
Bill, aye.
Jeff, aye.
Carol, aye.
Brittany, aye.
And if Nelson gets a vote, aye. Okay, there's no room, I guess, for any opposition, but if there is, let's hear it now. Okay, the ayes have it, motion passes. Item number three, consideration and possible action regarding approval of two wall signs and a freestanding sign for Best Donuts, located at 20998 Eva Street, Montgomery, in the Historic Preservation District as submitted by Sam Dana Investment.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, you see the information, I'm sure that you've all seen the construction that's happened, as they've been, they're now down to just a handful of items on the building. The original section that was presented to the commission just had the word Best, and I think donuts and kolaches just in print on their exterior elevations, and the owner has finalized the design plans. The signs are in the same location for the two wall signs, and they are also proposing a freestanding sign that is, if you see in the information that I took, a photo, it's out kind of toward 105, out, you know, on the other side of the parking lot from the building. They have a little indicator in the yard that says. Typically, the sign ordinance doesn't apply, the requirements of the sign ordinance specifically in terms of size of sign and the area of the sign, doesn't apply to the historic district. Usually, a sign that's in a historic district is, or I'm sorry, usually a sign that's on Highway 105 is only allowed to be 100 square feet and a maximum of 10 feet tall. The submission is 10 feet wide, but 15 feet tall, so it's actually a good deal larger for the freestanding sign than what would be, than what would normally be allowed. The freestanding sign, according to the location of where they have it marked on site, is also within a utility easement, which would require an encroachment and maintenance agreement, which is similar to other signs that end up in a city easement. Essentially, the agreement would say that if the city has to access any of the utilities in that easement, if in doing so, they have to remove the sign, or whatever the improvement is, the city's not responsible to replace it, or to bear the cost of reassembling it. I'd be happy to answer any thoughts or questions that you have on it.
I got a couple of questions, man, those pictures did not come through again. But I have just a couple of questions, the piece, the grounds that the City of Montgomery sign is sitting on, is that city-owned? Pardon?
It is, or I'm sorry, it's not, it's on that property.
It's on his piece of property.
Right, at least according to the site plan that was submitted by their engineer.
Okay, then so is that oak tree.
It is, or that's right, it's also on their property.
Okay. My concern there is, as I think with the original meeting we had on this, trying to, he's trying to squeeze too much in on that little corner. How, I know it's 10 by 15, how deep is that sign, do you know?
I would, give me one second, I'll find out.
I believe it's about 18 inches.
See, my question is, and that's what those pictures I took on the way home today, I don't know where he's going to put that with the sprinkler controls, there's two, I don't know what they are, there must be some type of a valve, or, I don't know what they are, they're in the ground, there's some type of control. We got the light pole and we got the textile pole. With the 10 by 15 measurements alone, I don't feel that it's in the best interest to put that and take a, I mean, that's really going to take away from the historic, I know it's not in the sign, it's not considered because we're standing, has to meet those, but that's just, I think it's just too much going on in that corner, personally.
Yeah, and I think we can all agree, the 15-foot, the overall size is too big for the area. And I do appreciate, David, that you put, the way you presented it there with the pictures, the proportions are different, the reality was different than the picture. But let me just add my part too, Bill, to everybody, I was able to go down there today and I walked it from both ends and took some measurements. I don't think we've got a problem with the sprinkler system, that all there, he's got a sign, a place marked there for the sign. But what, the way I measured it there, could see as far as the oak tree, they've trimmed that back, it looks real good. We really got to put, the height requirement on that would be very much similar to what the picture shows, the one where you say it's not in proportion, where the sign would have to hit no higher than the top of that speed limit sign. So we're looking at eight feet, eight, well, 10-foot max, and just so everybody can get an idea, the Remax sign, for the new Remax sign on the road there, is seven and a half foot at the top, and the post goes almost to 10-foot. So as you look at it from coming from both directions, proportion-wise, in my mind, it really looked fine, eight to 10-foot would be fine. And you still don't have to trim the oak tree back and you see it from the road. The sign itself, I don't have a problem with, the design of it looks great, it goes with everything there. But I think it's just, we can all agree, the size is just way too big, 15-foot is way more than it should be. But I, the way I measured it and looked at it from both ends, it looked to me like eight foot, we could limit it to eight, or even eight to 10-foot, depending on how they want to do the base. So, you know, I just feel like it would be appropriate as long as it's not too big. And really, the same size as in the picture, where the top of the Best Donuts sign is right at the top of that speed limit sign, that's right at 10-foot, is the top of the sign. But, you know, again, I think eight to 10-foot, we could put a limit on it.
My only concern is, within that little area of the building, the parking lot where that sign is, those all three are going to be illuminated. That's a lot of illumination, and golly, they're not, I mean, it's, I think it's really going to take away from coming in through there. Plus, you're saying about the tree, that's his tree, or next, are we going to be in there because he wants to cut the tree now?
Well, I understood that the original, on this paperwork, the original concern was if it was 15-foot, yes, that they would want, they would probably even tend to trim the tree more. But, right, it was trimmed, I'm not sure if it was the city or if they did it, their landscaper was out there last couple of weeks, and they put in shrubs and really cleaned it up, looks a lot better than it used to. But they trimmed that tree, they, like you should, on a live oak, they've trimmed it in the correct shape. So right now, where they've got it trimmed, the eight to 10-foot sign would be fine, you would, you could still see it fine as you're coming, as you're approaching from the east. And I, you know, I think they've done a good job with the landscaping, so I don't know why they would want to cut down a beautiful tree. I mean, they, other than, like you say, if it was blocking the sign. But as long as you keep the sign down to eight foot, eight to 10 at the top, then, you know, it's fine.
Well, how soon, how soon is he going to take those tree, myrtle trees out? Because those are going to block the sign, too.
No, I would think he would trim those to the, just keep them small.
I'm just, Jeff, we've been with other developers, you know, you give them, you give them, they're just going to keep taking them. I just, I mean, that's.
Well, I, yeah, you can't tell them exactly what plant he's going to put in there, but it's, so far, they've indicated, you know, everything I see down there is very high quality, compared to what was there before.
I know, but he's already changed, he's already changed the sign concept. It wasn't a nice sign, now it's got three, four, five different colors on it. You know, it's.
Well, yeah, I'm not in the retail business, I don't know what, you know, typically what they look for along a main road like that.
Well, I'm just talking us, I don't care about retail business, I'm talking about us being a city.
Yeah.
And we're trying to keep that, I know, we're trying to keep.
Well, but all the other, all those other businesses along the road, they've all got signs on a pole. I mean, it's not just on the building itself, that's just pretty standard.
I understand, but not that look in the, right, coming into the historical district. But anyway, that's just my thought, that's just my thoughts.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's just like everybody else along there, I mean, O'Reilly and McDonald's and the others, that's a lot bigger sign there.
Those are grandfathered in, those are there a long time ago.
Well, and I'm saying, I don't have a problem with any of that, that's what you're typically going to see along a main road. But I'm just saying, this is a lot smaller than what they're doing. This is all, looks like, like I say, if the sign was just like in the smaller proportion, it would, it would fit right in. So are we trying to do a motion on, to approve the whole, all three signs at one time? Because I hate to hold them up.
We don't have to approve all three at one time, no, you can be proactive in what you want to do. If you want to take the all signs as one thing, and then the freestanding sign as another, then that would be perfectly acceptable.
Dave, you said that he had a different sign from the very beginning on his planes, is that correct?
That's right, I don't, I had kind of wondered that at the time. It was on the elevation drawings, there was, it was just a note that said Best on it, and I can jump over real quick, and for, I guess this wouldn't help for those who can't, that can't see the, the, the video, I'm sorry, on this call, and I'm trying to get to this.
Well, let me put this in perspective, that was all preliminary, if y'all remember, with Remax, the same thing happened. They came back and they needed, they thought about it, they want, they put two signs on the building and one sign on the street. This is exactly what's happening here.
They're not illuminated, they're not illuminated.
Is this, I wasn't talking about illuminated, but the signs on the building and those freestanding ones are all illuminated? Let me look at that.
Looks like they got electric going to them, off the, off the, to Maddox.
Well, it is the 21st century.
See, that, see, that's a heck of a lot different than what he's proposing out of what we first approved.
Now, wait a minute, you got to have lights to see the sign at night. Everything else is lit up. No, well, we've always talked, we've talked about not, nothing too bright, overly bright, but it's, there's nothing wrong with having a light on a sign. So where do we, do we have something in there about being illuminated? Oh, yeah, as far as the how it's brighted you?
I did not see anything, no. I know that they're internally lit, but I don't know anything other than.
I didn't see anything about illumination for that street sign, I only saw it for the wall sign.
Well, yeah, that's a good question.
The street sign is, one of the drawings that I did not include in your packet was, I didn't include what they had submitted with the sign permit application that showed the electrical portion of it, but it is illuminated on the inside.
Certainly, certainly on the building, it's illuminated on the building, we would.
On the freestanding side.
Yeah, okay.
And again, if you guys wanted to, again, in order to locate the sign inside the easement, I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing the screen, they would have to have an encroachment and maintenance agreement that's approved by city council, so if you guys, them to, through that process, before you looked at any type of a revision to the size or anything else, then, you know, you can certainly do that as well.
Yeah, well, I think that's a good point, I didn't see that about the illumination. I think if we, in the end, eventually, if we do, if, my thought is, if we do approve it, it cannot be illuminated, and it has to be no more than eight foot tall, depending on the base, how they have to do it, but I'm not, just not sure when that should happen, if we try to combine that with the other approval for the easement. But that, and just let me say, that's, as you said, David, that's very common along there, there's a number of signs that are in that easement, and there should be no trouble getting that approved, because that's just the way it is there. But, yeah, I agree, I, my feeling is, and y'all can definitely want to make a motion on it, I hate to hold up things if that's a situation, but if that's not a problem, we could wait, but I think it should be, you know, smaller, really about half the size of what they were talking about, and not illuminated. Should we make a motion to that effect?
To approve the two wall signs and to direct staff to discuss the sizing with them and ensure that they get an encroachment and maintenance agreement approved by city council before you look at it again?
That works.
I want some kind of notation made that it's not going to be a 15-foot tall sign. I want to be sure that that sign is smaller than what they're indicating.
I would still believe that we would bring it back to you with the revised, before the staff approval on it. But I could certainly convey to the owner what the conversation here's been.
That'd be helpful. So, yeah, as far as what's on the table, I'll make a motion that we approve the two building signs as is, with the stipulation of more discussion on the other sign as to smaller, you know, basically substantially smaller, half the size, eight foot, and no illumination.
Do we, do we know what the illumination is? Because that's, that was always the main concern on a lot of these signs, is what the output is going to be. I know there, you know, Jeff, you've questioned a couple of businesses and what, and we don't, we do not know on this what the illumination is, and I know in the ordinance, we have a illumination.
Right, I do see on, it says white LED illumination on the building. It does have a number there, it's a number 7328, white, 316 since Plex face, I, hold on, I do see, I don't know, David, you might, this might mean something to you, it does say that on the building, it's, of course, 120 volt, but it's output 12 volt, 3.5 amp, 1.0 to 0.5 amp, that looks like pretty, not too bright, but it's LED, which they're all doing now.
If you guys would like, I could certainly request the total light output of the signs to ensure that it is compliant with the sign ordinance before, or I guess as a part of your approval.
Yes, yes, we could do it that way, that would be good, contingent on the brightness. Because I know we've had, that information is, we've got some, David, I think you had a guide that showed what the range was on brightness.
Yes.
Okay, so that would cover that. So do we still have a motion with that in there?
We do, we have yours on the table.
What is, what is the motion now?
I'll read it out. Yeah, go ahead.
To approve the two wall signs and require an encroachment and maintenance agreement approved by council before coming back for historic district approval, and the sign has to be compliant with the light output of the sign ordinance.
Yes, and then, and significantly smaller on the freestanding sign.
You got that, Dave?
I do.
Okay.
You're good.
I have a motion.
This is Carol, I'll second the motion.
So, we're, we're, we're going to prove this on the, with them coming back on the illuminations on the, building mounted signs, and a revision on the parking lot side, side, correct?
Yes, the freestanding sign, including, uh, no, no illumination at all, and, uh, smaller size, down to eight foot.
Were you wanting
That way, they wouldn't have to trim the tree.
Was it intended the commission to bring the, the illumination data back to the commission, or do you want it approved at a staff level? If it's within the ordinance, then you're approving it.
Well, if it's, if the, if the wall signs are within the, within the ordinance, we, you know, there's no reason to hold that up.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, that sounds good.
You got it, Dave?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Duly noted contingency to approve the signs located at twenty thousand nine ninety-eight Eva Street in the Historic Preservation District. Any further discussion?
I'm, I'm, I will approve it as long as we get the, the, the freestanding sign taken care of, because I still don't believe that is, I think that typical, from my opinion, it's a, it's a solid mass, it's a lot like the real estate companies, and it's, 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 um, I just think it's just too much in that little bit of area, but that's, that's my thoughts. But that's no problem, I'll, I'll prove upon, see what they come back with.
Appreciate, I understand, Bill, and, uh, yeah, we definitely got to work with it, work with it on size too.
Okay, anything further? Those in favor of approving this sign with its contingencies indicate by saying aye just after your name, so everybody knows.
Jeff, aye.
Carol, aye.
Bill, aye.
Brittany, aye.
Okay, and Nelson, aye. The ayes have it. Uh, if, if there's any in, anything further, now's the time to speak, sounds like it's approved. Okay, item number three, four. Consideration and possible action regarding a request to repaint and add a deck between the structures at three oh four and three oh eight Caroline Street, Montgomery, located in the Historic Preservation District, as submitted by Carla Nash.
Yes, sir, I, well, you guys see the information in your packet, and, uh, Ms. Nash is with us for waiting patiently as we've talked about all this other stuff. And, um, I will let her speak to you directly about, uh, what she's planning.
Hello, hope you guys are doing well. Um,
Good, thank you, you too.
So, these buildings are the blue buildings that, uh, were owned previously by Tom Cronin, recently by Kristen Billy and Slade, it's three oh eight and three oh four, if you're familiar with them, they're a bright kind of blue color, which you approved. But I would like to paint them a lighter white trim. And I submitted a sample to Dave, uh, of the color. But I also did a drive-by in downtown Montgomery, and I don't know if you're from oh eight Caroline, which is the Newman property, or eight twenty Caroline, which is the Love property, both of those are light gray with white trim, it would be similar to those. And then the deck that connects the two buildings was there when Tom owned the buildings, uh, and for some reason or another, and I just want to put it back up, along with the white picket fence.
But the deck will be the same size as the old one was?
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to say, Bill, you remember that pretty well, I know you spent a lot of time over there with the other business, uh, I would think that all looked like it was in proportion, uh, connecting the two, right? I mean, as far
It does, it's got a handicap ramp that comes off that porch. And then the lower deck is just the same height as the, uh, existing lower porches.
Carla, does it go all the way to the brick house?
It does, uh, um, it allows, that what that allows is to share the same T A B C license. So, it goes right to that east side of the brick building, so it's that width of the brick building.
Yeah.
And then just connects that lower level addition of the three oh four building, and then there's a ramp that connects to the upper of the three oh four building.
Okay.
I think it looked good before, and um, I just kind of want to replace it back. And then I want to put a twenty by forty illuminated sign, I'm just kidding.
Make sure it's really bright.
All right.
You got everybody's attention on that one.
Yeah, it's good.
All right, well, I will, if everybody's done, I will make a motion to approve the request to paint and add a deck between the structures of three oh four and three oh eight Caroline Street, located in the historical, historical district, as submitted by Ms. Carla Nash.
And this is Carol, I will second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to, uh, approve the repaint request at three oh four and three oh eight Caroline Street. Is there any further discussion?
Oh, and also the deck.
Also the deck.
The deck needs to be approved also.
Okay, let me, let me re- re-read it then. Regarding, recording a, it's regarding a request to repaint and add a deck between the structures at three oh four and three oh eight Caroline Street, Montgomery, in the Historic Preservation District.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, those in favor indicate by saying aye right after you say your name.
Brittany, aye.
Bill, aye.
Jeff, aye.
Carol, aye.
Nelson, aye, it's unanimous. Okay.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, it's going to look good.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, Brother Dave, there's not anything else written down here for business. Do you have anything to add right now?
No, sir, I do not, thank you all very much for, uh, participating in this, as we, again, kind of work through these times, uh, stuff that's new to all of us in terms of how we conduct business, I do appreciate it very much.
Well, we all feel the same, thank you, and, and everybody stay healthy and, and happy.
Okay, I will now entertain a, a motion to adjourn, anybody?
I will make a motion to sign off and adjourn on this meeting of April seventh.
All right, I have a motion.
I'll second.
Carol, go ahead, yeah.
All right, I have a motion from Ca- uh, second from Carol then, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 I guess we're adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
Take care now.
Miss Brittany, congratulations, we're very happy for you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, we have our hands full, for sure.
This will be a memorable year.
Yeah, for sure. All right, well, we'll see you guys in, oh, another month, right?
Sounds good, thank you all again.
Thanks.
All right.
Y'all take care, thanks, bye.